Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Yes?
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Here.
Minzer?
Here.
Raker?
Here.
Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. This evening, we have a presentation from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation regarding the city of Mount Clemens' involvement in the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. So...
In terms of a basic introduction, the Redevelopment Ready Communities Certification Program is something that had its origination in a different agency and it ultimately transitioned to the MEDC at the state level. You might have seen Roseville was one of the communities that recently achieved redevelopment-ready certification. City of Mount Clemens has been interested in that for some time and had prior made the application in the past to become part of that program and had not been successful in being chosen. Recently, we re-upped our effort to become part of that program and were accepted. And as part of that, we're going to have a kickoff presentation tonight for the benefit of the mayor and commission, as well as the people at home, to learn more about the program and what it's all about and what it can bring to the table for the city of Mount Clemens.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Well, hello, I'm Joe Myers, and I'm here representing the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program to give you guys a kickoff presentation. So, Mr. Brown kind of outlined what's happened with the city since you tried to get in the program initially, but you recently passed a resolution to proceed with the program with Brian and help of Stephen. They completed all of the self-evaluations of our program to kind of assess themselves on where they meet our best practices, where they don't. Staff attended all best practice trainings about a year ago, and tonight, we're holding a kickoff presentation. So, that's kind of the process so far. So, here's our mission, and our mission is to empower communities to shape their future by establishing a solid foundation to retain and attract business, investment, and talent. And so, what that means is, you know, we're looking, we look to help create solid planning, zoning, development foundation, and it's not just good for businesses, it's good for residents pulling permits. We kind of know that, you know, business needs talent, talent needs place, place needs business, so all these things are working together, and that's what our RRC is. So, what is our RRC? Our RRC is a technical assistance program where we review the policies, procedures, to our best practices and see where you stand and how you can improve to achieve certification. It's a melding of planning and economic development, so instead of having planning and economic development happening in two different departments, we're trying to bring them together and not siloing them apart. It's a connection of talent, place, and business, but ultimately, it's a certification program. So, here's all the communities in the pipeline. As you can see, you are on the map, so you are officially a RRC Evaluation in Progress community. You've passed resolution, you've done all the things you need to do to get involved in the program. The last thing that you need to do is send a memorandum of understanding, which we'll get into a little bit later. But, you know, we have communities as small as the village of Middleville in Berry County, all the way up to the city of Grand Rapids, so all over the board in the state. So, our program is overseen, and it was developed by our advisory council, and it's a mixture of public, private, and nonprofit sectors coming together to help educate us and make sure we're on the right track. So, every evaluation we get, our advisor council kind of reviews it to make sure we're on track and meeting our goals, but then also making sure that we're doing the latest and greatest best practices that we can. So, it's overseen by a wide range with influence from the development community as well. So, our program has six best practices. We're going to go through each one of them briefly. I'm not going to belabor any of them, but basically, it's set up as a guide to... We'll go through them all individually. So, best practice, but the way it works is our best practices are set up in evaluation criteria and evaluation expectations. So, a community needs to, the requirement for the program is to meet the criteria. The expectations are how we're looking that you're accomplishing the criteria. So, you don't have to meet every expectation, but that's just what we're looking at to make sure that you're meeting the criteria. So, each, we're going to take a little deeper dive. So, best practice one is community plans and public outreach. We're going to look at your plans, your DDA plans, your master plans, your capital improvements plan, and make sure that they're all working the same redevelopment vision throughout. And then, we're also going to look at your public participation strategy. One way that a community tends to get public input is by holding a public hearing for the master plan or for a rezoning. You've probably been to them. But, we're looking for you to go above and beyond that, to engage the public, to make sure what their vision is is seen throughout your planning documentation. So, one of our programs is to have a public participation strategy. We look at your zoning regulations. Do they meet your master plan? Do they need to be updated? Are they user-friendly? Do they contain graphics? Are they, is it easy to use? Some zoning ordinance you look at, and people throw up their hands and not know what's going on. We want to make sure that the average citizen who is pulling a deck permit, let's say, or wants to put an addition on their house can look at and read and understand your zoning ordinance. So, best practice three is the development review process. You know, how would somebody know how to pull a permit? Do you have a flow chart showing the process? Is it easy to follow? Is it easy to understand? Do you require a bunch of public hearings and a bunch of different meetings just for a simple permitted use permit? I have not reviewed your guys' development information, so I can't tell you that it does, but we look at that and give you recommendations on how you can either make it better or let you know what you're doing is great, you just need to create a flow chart, basically, to explain what your process is. Best practice four is recruitment and education, and so, it's always really hard, and I don't know if it's the case in Mount Clemens, but it's always really hard to get people to serve on planning commissions and DDA boards. It's hard to get the right people, not in every community, but sometimes it is. And so, we want to make sure that when you get the right people, are you orienting them? Are you retaining them? Are you training them? Are you giving them the proper material they need to do their job? So, we look for that. And then, we also make sure that are you having an annual meeting to discuss issues, common issues? So, that's what best practice four is. Best practice five is Redevelopment Ready Sites, and July 15th, I believe, I was here in Mount Clemens with your developer tour downtown, which was a fantastic event. We just look that you take that and run with it, even though you are running with it, but like drill down a little bit deeper on your prime, you know, one to three sites and actually package and promote them. You've got a better start than most communities that start our program because you took the time and with the city and the county really worked together to make sure that it was a very successful event. One of the benefits of the program is we put together an Opportunity Michigan Deal Book, which is where we specifically advertise specific properties in our communities that are going through our RRC and taking it around to national developer forums and statewide developer forums to say, "These are prime redevelopment opportunities in our RRC communities." So, once you formally approve the memorandum of understanding, the city will get up to three properties they can put in this deal book. Best practice six is Community Prosperity, and we look at, you know, do you have an economic development strategy? I believe you are working on one right now through the master planning process, but do you have one? Does it link to your master plan? Does it, how does it work with the city's overall vision? And then, how does the city market itself? Does it have a marketing strategy? And it's more of an internal document, but how does the city talk about the awesome things they're doing? I know you do, because I've seen you championing the city, but is there a strategy for that? Is there a document? Kind of, a lot of what our RRC is, is succession planning to make sure if somebody, you know, wins lottery and leaves, that business as usual can maintain. So, we take all six of those best practices, evaluate all of the aspects of the community, and then, we write our evaluation report. We set it up like a scorecard, so green means the community is meeting the best practice. Yellow means that some of the components are in place, but additional action is required, and red means that the best practice component is not present or outdated. So, we write all this, we write this report up, and then, we present it to you in a report of findings and present it to you guys. And then, over the course of, you know, the quickest it's ever happened is eight months, but it typically takes, you know, 18 months to two years. You work through all of the best practices, and then, there's a certification event, which we'll get into a little bit later. So, the next steps, so that's kind of the best practices, and I can answer any questions that any of you have, but that's what we evaluate. So, the next step to get engaged would be that you would need to sign a memorandum of understanding between the community and us, kind of outlining, you know, you look to us to evaluate you and help guide you along the way, and we ask that you, the staff, report out to the city council, as well as us, on a quarterly basis. Usually, it's more than that, but at least officially a quarterly basis, just to make sure that everyone's kept in the loop on what's happening. And then, once the memorandum of understanding, we do a formal evaluation, and then, we present the report of findings. So, memorandum of understanding, sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit myself, identify as a contact person, complete prevaluation, attend trainings, which you already have done, provide monthly updates. So, do you have any questions? Because I know I went through that quick, but I know that my time is limited, so...
When you do the evaluations of the six areas, do you give us, and we're found, you know, yellow or red, do you give us ideas or hints or a written plan on how we can, you know, get into the green zone?
So, we look to, we don't like to tell communities what to do, only because every community does it a little bit differently. We have a lot of examples to help guide a community on, here's what a community similar to your size has done, here's one, you know, smaller community, larger community. We have plenty of examples, but we don't like to say, "If you write this this way, you'll get certified." We look at it as more of, we provide as much guidance as a community wants. Some communities like to do things their own way, and so, we don't like to push, but we basically say, "As long as you're meeting the criteria, then you just have to demonstrate to us that you're meeting it." What we look at is the expectations. So, we will provide guidance, but we won't dictate.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I will be giving Brian the memorandum of understanding tomorrow morning, and we ask that if you choose to proceed, that you sign it within 30 days, I think is our policy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And do we have any other...
I do announcements. The Beautification Commission will be meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, October 6th, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall, and the Planning Commission meeting and the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting that are both scheduled for tomorrow, October 6th, have both been canceled.
Does anybody else have any? Okay. Adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Roll call, please. Bunton?
Yes?
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Minzer?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Okay, public participations, it's time you may address this body. All we ask is you give us your name and residential address and that you adhere to our three-minute rule.
My name is Loretta Siffen. I used to live at 14 Grashit Court in Mount Clemens. Now, I live in Clinton Township at 22534. I would like to thank the city representatives that came out to my house at 14 Grashit Court on Thursday, the 24th of September, to check out my backflow preventer that I had installed in 2002 by Mr. Roder in my basement to keep the water from coming up through the basement floor during heavy rainfalls. At the same time, I took out a valued customer protection plan that is dated a lifetime. Mr. Roder was more interested in taking my money and not getting back with me when I called him about finding a round, black object, which I thought they had left was part of their machine. Well, it was not. It was part of my backflow preventer that they neglected to put back in to stop the water from coming in my house. I have learned that, for one thing, when you hire a company to do something for you, watch what that company does, because a lot of times, they don't do the correct thing, and you end up suffering and a lot of pain in the end. One thing maybe you should do is a background check on them to make sure they're legit. The young man that put the backflow preventer in, he put two of them back in, the old one that was already there and the one that did not have a backflow preventer, he said, "There's no guarantee that my basement won't flood again, but I have this valued customer protection plan that is dated a lifetime." And I will say this, Mount Clemens do have flooding problems still. There are some areas that really need to be addressed by the city, and I do thank Mr. Brown for believing in me and sending someone out to check, because I would have not known it was a backflow preventer. Even though I found something round, didn't know what it was, but it was a backflow preventer that they neglected to put back in after sneaking out the drain, the pipes, and that was, that's not how you do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Van Camp, 50, North Walnut. Well, I came here tonight, haven't been here for probably six months. Used to come to almost every meeting, like to say a little something about something. This time, I think what I need to do is this, I want to talk about Denise Minzer. I think that she should be our next mayor. I think it's time for a change. I think it's like Fred Miller, our Macomb County Commissioner. He endorses her. We need her. We need a change in this city. Our city has been, and it's going downhill, as far as I'm concerned, from my perspective, all the time. It just is nonstop. So, we need to change, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, couple things. Gloria Haller, 260 Cass, Mount Clemens. Item 9A on your agenda tonight. When you look at that, do you know what you're reading? I want to make real sure, because you just clubbed the homeowners with a property tax increase. And if you know what you're reading and you're familiar with the wording, an industrial facilities tax. If you approve this tonight, it will be step one towards this company getting a tax abate over my dead body until you get that millage. Well, we're back to 15 again. No tax abatements. Number one. Number two, wow. Before we get all carried away with economic development, can we get down to the revenue stream problem? You need to get moving and focused on a city income tax. That's what we need. I'll be glad to discuss the details with anybody or tell you where to go to do it, but you do that first. You're getting the cart before the horse. Speaking of taxes, when I said it was a 33% increase, that's what I meant, and it wasn't right. From 15 mils to 20, that's arithmetic, that's not in math, that's 33% increase. And when the gentleman back here and I both said it'd be 44, 45%, I got my tax bill, it's a 44% increase, and that was all done. You balance the budget on the backs of low-income and other people based on lies, and that kind of a foundation is going to get you. That whole way that that tax issue was put together and presented and followed up, and now, you're talking about you're going to hire this, hire that, buy this, buy that. What? I remember somebody standing here, in fact, it was Andy, stood here and said, "What's it going to get?" And we were told clearly, "Oh, services," and just the current level of services. And suddenly, you get your wish list, our money, kind of snarkily, and now, you're going to spend it. And city races, as far as I know, are nonpartisan. Correct, city clerk? Right? City races are nonpartisan. I find it kind of untoward, you have the Democratic party machine in Macomb County backing two of the candidates. I found it more than untoward, and I'd like to pass these out. Boy, my mailbox, my windshield, everything's been jammed full of papers since this election has started. I would like to know if we're going to just have another generation of people who tell us lies. And the Macomb County Democratic Committee endorses Denise Minzer and Laura Cropp. Denise Minzer for mayor, she's a lifelong resident of Mount Clemens. Wow, she's five years old. She old enough to be sitting here?
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name's Rick Locke. I live on Cambridge, 207 Cambridge. I was here, I think, three times earlier this year, speaking about the millage proposal that was being considered, being contemplated, and finally went through. I made a couple of statements at that time, and there was rebuttal to one of the statements at a later date that didn't have anything to do with what I said, but it was attributed to what I said, so I figured I just want to set this straight. I guess I'm from the old school, I like things to be square and even. I made a comment that the millage proposal represented a 45, 45.9% increase. 45.9, 13.7 to 21, or 13.9, whatever it was. At a later meeting, and I'm only talking about millage now, at a later meeting, one of the rebuttals from one of the people sitting in front of me, you'll know who you are, stated that, "Well, your taxes aren't going to go up 45% or 40% or 23% or whatever you said it was." Well, I'm here to beg to differ with you. When I paid my taxes this time, my taxes went up, my city taxes went up exactly, exactly to the penny, 45.9%. And I even used the new evaluation, which was like an $800 increase. I used that, and guess what? My taxes went up 45.9%. Even though I was told that your taxes aren't going to go up, whatever you say they're going to go up, they're not going to go up. Well, I beg to differ with you. Mine did. And by the way, my check didn't bounce either.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Laura Cropp. I'm a resident at 15 Bellevue. I was listening to the public radio station late last week, and they had a very interesting program about the problem that Detroit is having with medical marijuana dispensaries, and they have hundreds and hundreds of medical marijuana dispensaries, and they are deciding to pass now legislation within their city to deal with this issue. And so, they believe that it will get rid of a lot of medical marijuana dispensaries. While I was, while I was listening, I thought, "Well, that sounds great, but those places are probably going to try to find a new home." And so, I was doing some searching on the Internet and thought, "Oh, most of them are located in Detroit and not in the suburbs at this point." But, then I thought, "Well, that must be because we have some kind of ordinance." But, I looked at our ordinances, and there's nothing, there's a medical, I'm sorry, there's a marijuana reference in the ordinances, section 20, I believe, 20.0 something. But, it was from 1984 and hasn't been amended, from what I can see, since, which makes sense because we haven't really dealt with this issue since present. And so, I thought, maybe that would be something that we would want to look into in terms of maybe being proactive and teaming up with Mr. Bunton's families and youth intervention, seeing what other communities are doing to get ahead of this. Let's be proactive, and let's hopefully not welcome them to Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Administrative responses?
Thank you. We had a couple of items brought up at the last meeting regarding various properties in town. There was a reference to Robertson and northbound Grashit and the fact that residential property there needed to be torn down. This residential property is owned by a church currently. The owner has approached the city and asked for assistance with demolition. We continue to work toward demolition of that property, given the present circumstances that are in play on that location. 177-179 North Avenue was an interesting case. The owner had agreed to make the property available to the fire department to conduct training activity because of the status or the condition of the property. The fire department did take advantage of that offer and did conduct various exercises at the address. Once those activities were complete, a demolition permit was issued for the property, and that's currently where we're at with the company that has the business, so to speak, being a company that's familiar to the city, and we expect demolition to happen sometime in October.
Happen today.
I did not see that today. That's pretty early in October, so good work. We were expecting it might be a little bit later because of the work demands or the time demands for the company, so that's good news that it came down today. 263 North Avenue, this residential property was the subject of a court date in late September. The case was adjourned at that time for two weeks to allow the owner additional time to work towards a certificate of occupancy. There was also an issue raised about 94 Park Street with a resident saying there was a tree in front of that house that was causing sidewalk issues. The city has, in the meanwhile, cut that tree down, and there are multiple sidewalk squares that have been removed with replacement to follow there. I don't know if there might well be an update on that as well. The last I checked on it was last week. So, that is in process. The DPS did cut the tree down after our last commission meeting. The last point that I was going to talk about in administrative responses was traffic enforcement requests. There were a couple of issues raised by residents regarding traffic enforcement on two streets, Bellevue and Dorothea. Those concerns were communicated to the sheriff's office, and I've been told they are responding accordingly with possible measures to include a radar trailer to be placed on site, as well as potentially patrolling and ticketing as necessary. I do not have an update on current efforts on that. I will check into it this week and see how that is turning out. And those are the two items that I have for this week.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings. Oh, you had a question?
No, but I have something about the minutes.
Oh, okay.
I believe at the September 21st meeting, I did make the motion to excuse Commissioner Raker, and Commissioner Campbell seconded it, and we voted on it unanimously, and it does not indicate that in the minutes. So, with the addition of that excusal, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any other changes? Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Minzer?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
General Business, 9A. Request to schedule a public hearing to consider establishing an industrial development district at 350 Church Street for College Park Industries, Inc. Need a motion?
Motion to schedule a public hearing for October 19th, 2015, to consider the establishment of an industrial development district at 350 Church Street pursuant to PA 198 of 1974 for College Park Industries Incorporated.
Support.
Okay.
So, pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974, College Park Industries Incorporated is requesting the establishment of an industrial development district in 350 Church Street so that it may attempt to secure an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. First step is a public hearing must be held to consider the establishment of a new industrial development district. As required by statute, notices will be mailed to all taxing jurisdictions, and a notice will be placed in the Macomb Daily. As indicated in their cover letter, College Park Industries Incorporated intends to invest approximately $500,000 in real and personal property and create 11 to 15 new jobs over the next two years.
And who do we have with us tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners, city manager and staff. I'm Camille Silda from Macomb County, and I'm an economic developer. With me is Jill Wicker from College Park Industries. They are headquartered in Warren, and they are expanding operations into Mount Clemens by purchasing the multi-unit building located at 350 Church Street. The company will end up investing approximately $1 million in total into the building for upgrades to develop a state-of-the-art manufacturing, research, and design center, and then, a center of excellence over the next two years, and that is split into both real and personal property. The company is coming... The company is coming before you tonight to ask for the call for the public hearing for the establishment of an industrial development district on the parcel. As previously mentioned, this is the first step under Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended. The second step is to ask the local community to examine and approve the investment into the parcel, and since the tax law changed, ask for an abatement only on the real property investment. So what does this mean for the city of Mount Clemens? What this means is that you will have an occupied building, an owner paying property taxes and making investment, hiring local people who spend money in the city for services, food, and dry cleaning. It also means that based on the additional investment that is taxable, the city will reap fifty percent of the value of the new taxes to the community, and as an incentive for business, and this company in particular, for the ability utilizing the tax savings to continue hiring, buying machinery or equipment, other personal property, or an expansion, again, a fifty percent reduction in the new taxes only. So this taxpayer is not, not paying any of the current taxes. They continue to pay whatever they're assessed at. This is the additional tax. So if you have any questions regarding the process, I'm happy to answer them. And if you have questions regarding the project, Joseph Wicker is here to handle them from College Park.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to have a few words with you this evening. To really get a feel for College Park Industries, we've been in Macomb County, started out in Fraser back in nineteen eighty-eight. Just three years ago, we purchased, we leased in Fraser. We purchased a building in Warren and improved that so we could do all of our manufacturing in a more efficient manner, and have been pretty successful in doing so. We, to really get a feel for what we do, we manufacture prosthetic feet and component parts for the amputee population, lower limb at the present time. Our website is college-park.com, and I would welcome you to, and invite you to look at that website. I think you'll find it very dynamic. Like I said, we've been in Macomb County all of our existence, starting out in Fraser, just leasing and expanding. We went into Warren to improve our manufacturing expertise and skills. We found, came up with the need to control even more of our machine parts, which is a fine CNC machining process. We do, we're fortunate enough to get an operations manager to oversee that for us. We're going to have our engineering design personnel down there. But the front part of the building, if any of you are familiar with three fifty Church Street, is pretty much set up with some minor modifications in the next eighteen months or so. We expect to really open up what we'll call our Center of Excellence. That is so that we can have CPOs, certified processes and orthotics, to work with their patients and view and experience and help them with some issues they may have in fitting an amputee patient. It could be below the knee or above the knee. And ultimately even help out possibly with their physical training. We just came out with a foot called the sidekicks, which is, you get, usually wear a pair of them because it helps them, a new amputee to gain their balance. As you can imagine, if you don't have that lower extremity, not only do you have the shock of losing an extremity, you then have to get used to whatever artificial means are put forth on it. I think it was September fourth, we acquired the three fifty Church Street building. I'm very familiar with that location because it used to be the parking lot for Mount Clemens Bottery, which a few years ago I was a member of that group. But on September thirtieth, we acquired a company out in the west east coast called Liberating Technologies, Incorporated. They have the Boston arm. So now we're upper extremities and lower extremities. Liberating Technologies does not do any of the manufacturing themselves. So whatever they outsource the manufacturing, very similar to College Park many years ago, we'll be able to add that machining and expertise and improvements to that Boston arm here in Mount Clemens. We've had problems with getting prototypes developed or machined by outside sources. We've had problems with getting some of our ankles and other component parts to our feet machined on a timely basis and delivered to us. Some of them have to be coated, et cetera. So that's the reason why we want to have the tech center first. And within the next twelve to eighteen months, we would like to have the Center of Excellence. We are already in the process of taking a look at some CPOs that may be out there, starting to do the interviewing. I think bringing in the Boston arm and the opportunity that Liberating Technologies provides us from Boston, their operations essentially stay out there. They are, they also do some research on Myo Electric, which ultimately will go into electronic feet and ankles, as well as with their arm. And they have the sources with all the universities out there in the east coast, and they subcontract out some of their support for their grants that they have been awarded. So it's really an opportunity, and again, if, to do really justice, if you could get on our website, college-park.com, I think you'll see what College Park is all about. It is a privately owned company. And again, I heard the comment earlier in tonight's meeting. In fact, I believe the taxes here are a little bit higher than what the Aaron Warren, but I'm not complaining about that. But any new investment that qualifies under this program, we're still going to pay fifty percent of the tax. And it's going to increase the tax base for the city of Mount Clemens. And we're going to be bringing more and more people into this facility.
Questions? Does anybody here have any questions?
Can you promise a certain number of Mount Clemens residents we at least consider for those jobs, for some jobs?
We consider all the way from the inside of our employee base, when promotions or openings come up, regardless of where they're at, to obviously, we, hiring people has been a big challenge, I think, for many companies, especially for us. If we've got somebody in our backyard that can come and work for us, we'd be more than happy to hire them. That is not an issue. Yes?
Okay. Commissioner Raker?
This is just simply requesting to have the public hearing through the district. Then there'll be another request for the certificate, and then that hearing. What's your timeline to try and acquire the certificate?
ASAP. We are missing the deadline of the State Tax Commission for this year. So typically, there's a call for public hearing, a public hearing. We will then finalize the paperwork and bring it into the city for the request for the IFT. Then there will be another call for the public hearing and then the public hearing. So at a minimum, it's about a month. It can go outside of a month because they're, they're really ready to move in. They're working with the city now as far as permitting.
We'd like to get a C of all by the end of this month.
So you have already purchased?
We bought.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
It's a nice neighborhood. City of Mount Clemens, I think, offers an awful lot for companies of our size, anyway.
Commissioner Hill?
I just want to be sure that I understood what you said about the taxes.
Yes.
I, I think what I heard you say is that they would continue to pay the current taxes on the building.
Correct.
And the abatement would be for fifty percent of the increased value from investment.
Correct, based on this investment.
Okay.
So yes.
So the city's not, would not lose any money?
No, they gave fifty percent of the taxes on the new investment. So that's why I called a win-win for the city and the company.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Raker?
You'll have those financial analytics at the time of the certificate hearing?
Yeah, prior to that, I have to prepare an entire package with mapping, and I think you got the three.
Right, but we'll discuss that at the certificate hearing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I feel comfortable we can comply with that timeline, but going through the due diligence on buying the building, even more due diligence on the acquisition out in the east coast. And those, these have only had sixty days, so for a month, I'm getting Camille her information. I think we can put that together for you.
One last question. Is this a move for you from Warren to, so you're expanding your operation?
Yes.
This has been a steady growth company since I met them in two thousand and ten. They're, they're in a nice, stable incline. So when I spoke to Mr. Tingui, the, you know, community development director, I was sharing that with him. This is not a new company. There isn't risk. This is a stable company with a solid history of growth.
And just for the viewing public's understanding, this is not an approval of this process. This is just for the hearing, and people will have an opportunity to speak specifically at that hearing on this issue. So for people out in the audience and for people at home, this is not us approving this exemption at this point in time. I know, I'm just saying that for everyone else's edification.
Okay.
Does anybody else have anything? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll take a vote on the motion.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing will be set for October nineteenth. Welcome to Mount Clemens. Nine B, approve purchase and payments of invoices.
I move to, I move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Questions?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Hill?
This security guard at the water plant, is that a new position?
No, they're standard operating procedures to have that, that position monitoring the property overnight.
So we've already had a security guard? And so we're just hiring a different company?
So you're re-bidding the contract.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mensah?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
City managers report?
So various project updates. The Market Street project continues through its process. The contractor began pouring concrete, concrete on Market Street the week of September twenty-eighth. Asphalt work is expected to commence as well. Actually, that's, that's out of date these days. The asphalt work is well in process and closer to completion than anything else. Project is projected to be substantially completed by October tenth, in time for the street to be opened by the Columbus Day Parade event. Various work items on punch list items, including striping, cleanup, et cetera, would be completed after October tenth. Downtown crosswalk replacement slash beautification project. As you may recall, we have a project that we're looking at scheduling for the majority of it in two thousand and sixteen. However, some of this work is taking place in the Market Street project footprint. And because of that, those crosswalks are being addressed currently and will be completed as part of that project, and should also be completed by the same timeframe that we mentioned earlier, on October tenth. There's miscellaneous contract work as well. The city has a contract with Luigi Cement Contractor for handling a variety of concrete issues. These include minor street repairs and catchphrase and work related to activities in the utilities department, as well as items such as sidewalk flag replacements. We anticipate this work will begin around the middle of October and should in the end represent an investment of nearly one hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the city. Second item is the state of the city address. Previously mentioned it at the prior meeting. Mayor Dempsey will be delivering the two thousand and fifteen state of the city address on Friday, October ninth. The event is presented by the Macomb County Chamber. It is being held at the Oakland University Anton Frankel Center at Twenty South Main in downtown Mount Clemens. Doors open at seven thirty with breakfast, and speech should begin at about eight fifteen a.m. There's a twenty-five dollar fee for members of the Macomb County Chamber or a thirty-five dollar fee for non-members. If you're interested in attending the state of the city speech, and why wouldn't you be? You can contact Daniel Baer of the Macomb County Chamber at five eight six four nine three seven six zero zero, or you can register by visiting the city website at cityofmountclemens.com and clicking on the registration link, which is in the announcements section of our homepage. So anybody that's looking for an opportunity to attend the speech, either contact Ms. Barrett at four nine three seven six zero zero number or visit the city website. And that's all I have this evening.
And I think you will be airing this state of the city address on the cable. Am I correct? Okay. So for those who can attend, they'll be able to. Anybody have questions? Commissioner Mensah? Utilities Director. It's October.
It's coming. It'll be done.
How many, how many times?
I told you early October. It's only been five days in October, so. It'll happen soon.
Okay. And then I wondered, this one hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we're spending, this, this investment in the concrete work, does that include the fifty thousand that we have set aside for sidewalks?
That is bumped up by that fifty grand, yes.
Okay. And will you please refresh our memory what that fifty grand covers?
Well, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. It was a little north of two hundred and fifteen flags, a little north of fifty properties that we had marked for various sidewalk issues in terms of greater than a two-inch trip hazard, things of that nature. So it's going to cover bad expense upfront for the city. And then we will be billing individual homeowners that are, that are involved with that for reimbursement. And to the extent that they pay us back promptly, we'll get the money back promptly and have that money available for the second phase of the program.
So that will be a continually revolving fund?
Yeah, to the extent that we achieve full reimbursement or close to full reimbursement on that, we'll have additional funds available for additional work. That's correct. So initial billing would be for people to pay us directly. If that doesn't happen through that medium, then we can go to the, to the steps of having the finance department place a lien on the property, get it through the tax process that way. So there's a bit of a delay that, that could be involved, depending on how, how we do in terms of prompt reimbursement on those expenses. So we're in a ballpark of about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of expense. So if, if we were double that, that would be over the fifty thousand dollars that we have allocated. But we're expecting to get a good amount of reimbursement back quickly and allow us to do the full, at least twenty-five thousand in the spring.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
Just like to thank the city manager for updating the properties as to the, what's going on and the success in taking care of two of them. So two to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I want to thank Dave Biscano from the, I probably slaughtered his last name, but anyway, from the Mount Clemens Fire Department for giving a mini CPR course to the women at the Mount Clemens United Methodist Church on October first. It was really very beneficial and very much appreciated. And I also want to remind people that the Mount Clemens Fire Department offers free CPR classes to Mount Clemens residents. If you're interested in taking one of those classes, you can call the fire department at four six nine six eight four seven and have your name put on a waiting list. And when they have enough people for a full class, they will call you. Taking a class may help you save the life of someone you love. I think it's something everyone should know about. Secondly, I have a concern. I guess this is a question to city administration. Living on Cass Avenue, I am aware of many people crossing Cass Avenue to businesses on either side of the street. For example, the Cass Party Store, the Appliance Store, AOC Engraving, John's Restaurant, and the Engine House Restaurant. And there are really no good places to cross to go to those businesses because a lot of the corners don't coincide, on one side of the street, they don't coincide on the other side of the street. And there's also a lot of traffic and a lot of drivers going way too fast. So I know that Cass Avenue is a county road. So I'm wondering if the city can request that the city, that the county install one or two crosswalks in that area. And there should also be some pedestrian crossing signs, too. I think this is an important safety concern that really needs to be addressed. Also relating to the medical marijuana issue, I know that we have dealt with that a couple times on this commission and voted not to have any medical marijuana places in the city of Mount Clemens. So that, I don't know if it's in the ordinances or not, but.
Resolution.
That's not, we had a moratorium that we extended for about twenty-four months' worth of a moratorium.
Where are we in that twenty-four months?
Well, the moratorium's expired, but we haven't had much activity in terms of people expressing an interest in, in opening up a facility. And also keep in mind that up until probably just three, four months ago, there was an attorney general opinion in place that said that dispensaries were illegal. So therefore, nobody was, was going to be allowed to open them up. Well, now the Supreme Court reversed, well, the attorney general is not a court, but the Supreme Court, the case reached the Supreme Court, and they have said that the Medical Marijuana Act does not prohibit. Marijuana Act does not prohibit dispensaries. So we have a draft of an ordinance that Community Development and our office has worked on in the past, and it's primarily a zoning ordinance that would spell out where it would be permissible, and be very limited areas. But at any rate, that's in the process.
Okay, so we are dealing with it, anyway. The, one other thing I wanted to say was in relation to the sidewalks. I have seen a couple, well, one person I know for sure had a couple of his squares, flags, whatever you call them, ticketed, and he put in a whole new sidewalk, the whole length. And there's another person I know that wasn't cited, but did put in a whole new sidewalk and driveway. Anyway, so I think people are working on improving the sidewalks, and I'm hoping this is going to take off, and more people will be doing that also. Anyway, that's all I have tonight. Thank you. Have a great evening and a good week.
Thank you. Commissioner Raker.
Mr. Van Camp, sir, it was good to see you, and also Mr. Zander's. It's good seeing you out in the crowd, and those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah.
When I talked about the places that I went in the city last two weeks ago, I left one out, and I wanted to mention it. I went to the TJM skateboard shop that's in the old Dot Furniture Building to buy our, you know, my little man, the seven-year, he's now seven, a skateboard. That's all he wanted for his birthday. And when I went in there, they gave me my choice of four or five different skateboards, for his weight, for his size, all with pirates on it, because that is his thing. He is a pirate. And his three-year-old sister now steals it and hides it under her princess bed, so I'm going to have to buy another one. But they were very nice in there. It's, they will give you the right-sized skateboard for the child, and they will adjust the wheels and keep them, you know, tightened and tuned, stuff like that, that you're not going to get if you go to a big box store. So I wanted to say that they were very, very nice to me in there, and got a skateboard that my little man carries around, and he's afraid to use yet. So the Macomb County Genealogy Group meets twice a month over at the Mount Clemens Public Library. I've talked to a lot of people who are into genealogy and into researching their family roots, and so on October 14th, they have a class called Let's Talk Genealogy, and they're going to talk about search engines and how to search for your ancestors' information. They are free, all people are welcome. You can check with the library for more information, but October 14th at 7:00 p.m. The Michigan Transit Museum is still offering train rides. My little sister, Jennifer, took her baby on it. They had a blast. It was a lot of fun. It's a 30 to 40-minute round trip, at least, from Joy Park. $7 for adults, $4 for kids. Mr. John Jamison had a, I had a lovely chat with him, and I recommend it highly if you have kids, or if you yourself are a train enthusiast. You can check with them to, I think they're running only on Sundays through the month of October. And I wanted to say a congratulations to the Mount Clemens Public Schools for a perfect score on the annual bus inspections by the Michigan State Police. That is very good news. It's much improved from their scores last year, and so congratulations. And those are my comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
I'm pleased to join the world community in recognizing the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I am sure that every adult under the sound of my voice knows someone who has been diagnosed with this dreaded disease. We encourage women to get their breast examined regularly. Self-examination and mammograms are significant tools in fighting against breast cancer. A little considered fact is that a small but significant number of men also get breast cancer. I encourage men to pay attention to their bodies. I know that we don't want to appear, we don't want to appear as sissies or weak, but if something seems wrong and you can't explain why, get yourself checked by a physician. This is good advice for men and women. I encourage everyone to support Breast Cancer Month in whatever way you can, and I am wearing pink today on that behalf. The Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families held its third Drug Takebacks Events on September 26th. The event was a great success. We collected over 22 pounds of unwanted, unused prescription drugs. When you consider how very little a single prescription weighs, you can get a good idea of how much that really was. These drugs will not become a part of our water supply, nor our ground cover, and thus not a part of our food supply. They will also not be available for recreational purposes during this homecoming and party season. A healthy and hearty thanks to everybody that participated in our drug takeback event. And now for Commissioner Wisdom. "It's Choice, Not Chance, That Determines Our Destiny," and that's by Jean Nittish.
Thank you. Just a reminder that the Fire Department is having an open house this weekend, Saturday, I'm sure, so bring your.
Sunday.
Oh, Sunday, October 11th, right? Same day as the Columbus Day Parade. Columbus Day Parade's, no?
Columbus Day Parade's Saturday.
Oh, okay. I switched them. There's something both Saturday and Sunday, so. Parade one day and the open house, so bring your children down to the fire hall, and there's going to be pumpkin carving, I think. And what do you have?
Hot dogs.
Hot dogs, popcorn.
Fire equipment demos, Jaws of Life demo, U of M Survival Flight Medical Helicopter, the Macomb County Sheriff's Department Vehicles, stand the magical, the magical firemen train rides, Russell the Clown, Don't Take, Kikwak Rattle, and Pumpkin Carving from noon to four.
Okay. Everybody get that? Did you get that back there? Get out and clear, okay. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm seeing changes downtown, which is kind of exciting, and I'll make more comments about that on Friday, and I just want to extend an invitation to Mr. Van Camp to be part of that change downtown. He has a gorgeous building on the corner of Walnut and Macomb, and we'd love to see something in there, so I'd love to see you be part of the change and bring Mount Clemens back. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Raker.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.